Welcome back to the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting of July 12, 2022. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. The private attorney-client meeting to discuss litigation strategy in the case of William Hammond and Pasco County Professional Firefighters Local 4420 International Association of Firefighters versus Pasco County Case Number 51-2022-CA-000150-CAAXWS Florida Circuit Court Six Judicial Circuit has concluded. To lawyers.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, outside counsel and myself have gotten adequate direction. We need no motion in public. I will remind you that the contents of the litigation assessment meeting is confidential pursuant to Florida statute and shouldn't be discussed. As with any of your active litigation, I advise that you not discuss the matter with anyone and if anyone wishes to talk to you about the matter, direct from the outside counsel.
Okay, we're going to proceed with the public hearings and we are on to P what? P-91.
Item P-91 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 18, 2022.
Madam Chair Commissioners Denise Hernandez Planning and Development. P-91 is BCS 220270. This item was advertised as a continuance. This is a modification to Land Development Code Section 1104 flood damage prevention. The request is to continue the item to the August 24, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Newport Richey.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Recently, just the other day, just got the FEMA requirements, the state requirements. I would like staff to be able to send that off to everyone so they can actually read them, so we can actually see what requirements are from FEMA, the state, and then even look at the additional things so that we can look at it, we do look at it, to see what the differences are. Denise, can you make that happen?
I believe that some of my colleagues are in the audience or may be listening, so that will definitely happen.
Okay. I move to continue, time certain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, the other thing I've asked for too is a redlined distinction between the two. Okay, the next one, P-92.
Item P-92 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 16, 2022.
P-92 is PDD 220029. This item is the adoption for this comprehensive plan amendment. We're asking that you accept a public comment and adopt by roll call vote. This was presented to the local planning agency on March 3 of 2022 and it was transmitted by the board on April 5, 2022. Sorry for the feedback that's happening there. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan provided for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 05 from RES 1 residential one dwelling unit per gross acre to PD plan development and approximately 178.13 acres of real property located at the south side of County Line Road and the text amendment creating subarea policy flew 7.1.65 North Ridge and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9 adding subarea map 2-9 65 North Ridge and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. If you would please accept public comment and adopt the item by roll call vote.
All right, Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. In the agenda item, it talks about how the county line, the sewer agreement we had with Hernando County has now been extinguished. I know Mr. Carbella is going to be working with Hernando County to try to bring something back to us, maybe better and stronger than was before. I want to make sure that we're not bound by anything here that they can get back to us to say that this is a bad development because of that being done, because a development just can't take place until that sewer lines are in. Is that correct?
That's correct and you will see that in the MPUD request that happens in P-100. So there's things that will...
Keep that from happening.
Things that will have to happen before.
Okay. On another note, I'm trying to get my computer to stop pulling it up, but as I was reading it, it said that if they built a real entry product, that they'd be able to use modern disc house. And I will tell you, for the area, it's going to need a lot of transportation improvements and I want to make sure that we take that clause out. I did talk to the applicant about this.
Okay, I think my colleague is telling me that that might not be in the comp plan part of it. Is that accurate? That's in the MPUD?
Roll call.
I think we need to discuss that at P-100.
That would be in your MPUD.
P-100.
All right. So if I'm looking at 92, it's also got listed as retail commercial office at 40,000 square feet. I think that number is supposed to be 400,000 square feet. It shows on the map it's like 10 acres, which would be more appropriate, more accurate.
So my colleague who did the comprehensive plan amendment is shaking his head in the negative. It should be 40,000 square feet.
No, we need a discussion about that. But it does show 10 acres of land, which closer to the 40,000, I mean 400,000 number. I don't know how that would get missed.
So I believe you have the applicant here as well that can address that, but again, my colleague who wrote the comprehensive plan amendment, the subarea policy, is telling me that the intent is for 40,000 square feet of commercial.
What's going on with this?
When we go to the MPUD...
Wait, wait, wait. What's going on with this sound?
Sorry, I'll walk away. My voice majorly carries, so you don't really even need me on that microphone.
It's still giving.
Am I okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So my understanding, and of course this is within the MPUD, that there's a possibility of having a loom as well to get more commercial square footage by reducing residential square footage, but again, my colleague who processed the comprehensive plan amendment is telling me that 40,000 square feet is the max.
So when I have my meetings, this is all designed to go to 10 acres, which is more than 400,000 square feet, so I have an objection to that. I'm not looking for all residential, I want to see commercial up there. And I'm told it's supposed to happen in the MPUD anyway, so I'd like to get that adjusted or have the conversation about it.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? We'll have the applicant come up and talk about the project. Okay, let's hear from the applicant.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Richey, 34652. Good afternoon Commissioners. So the number is that we included in our traffic analysis was 40,000 square feet and that was based upon five parcels at 8,000 square feet apiece, which is common square footage for the acreage that they have there. If the county wants us to add more, as long as staff didn't object, we certainly could change the number.
Do you have the... Do you have any site layout or anything?
So I don't have... Staff has not given their presentation, I just came up to answer the question. I mean, well, I guess Denise did, but it wasn't a PowerPoint presentation.
All right, so if I could, let me ask you a couple kind of questions. So Barbara, how do we see it on the map which shows 10 acres, which equates closer to 40,000 square feet, but at the same time we see this here at 40,000? And that was something I told you was a... What are we missing here as far as why is that show, that number showed to be 400,000 is supposed to be?
Well, it's 40 and that's the number that the team, for those acreage, based upon their experience in laying out commercial uses for those acres, that's the square footage they thought was appropriate for that location.
So the 10 acres of land is supposed to get 40,000 square feet of commercial?
Yeah, five parcels at 8,000 square feet apiece is where they came up with 40. Now I could bring up...
Is that like five drive-through something?
Well, it's not, they don't have, it's approved as commercial. We don't have it broken down into users yet, but it is, that's how the numbers arrived at and I can have our engineer who, you know, worked with the client to come up with the appropriate numbers for that, because you don't want to over entitlement either.
So this is a master plan, the map?
Yeah, I mean, we're not really talking about P-100, but she wanted to see whether the commercial is proposed, because that's where it would be.
Do you... But the comp plan does set those numbers, so I wouldn't want you to go past the, and say, "Let's just deal with it in the MPUD," when the comp plan is a PD, so it sets those numbers as well. It doesn't set the acreage for the commercial, it sets the number, but it says 40 is the number.
I'm thoroughly confused. Denise, let me ask you a question. So if I'm going to set this up for 10 acres of commercial, they can fill it as intense as they want, I'm not worried about that, why would it have such a low number there?
I believe Barbara stated that that's the analysis that her transportation team put together for 40,000 square feet of commercial.
On 10 acres of land?
On four...
So let me say this, so the 10 acres of land that's set up there, it can't be anything else except for retail or commercial? They can't put residential?
That's correct.
All right. We'll deal with MPUD next.
But understand, you're capping it in the comp plan.
Yeah.
Because this is a PD comp plan. So their entitlements will be 40,000 square feet of commercial unless they...
Unless they switch it and that'll take the matrix to go do that.
Unless they take residential and convert it to commercial.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore, I'm getting dizzy.
I don't... I'm sorry. Maybe Denise or Barbara, you can answer this, just going back to Commissioner Mariano's statement about the 40,000, but Mr. Steiner said it would be capped at 40,000, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay. You can actually, I would assume on 10 acres, you could probably fit more if you wanted to, right? Just on the 10 acres, you might go vertical or something like that. You can always raise the maximum to satisfy probably commissioners' concerns, doesn't mean you have to fill it.
Yes, if the county was comfortable, they wanted to change the number in these documents, that could occur. And we probably need to make sure we add to the subarea policy the loom language, so if you do adopt this subarea policy in this comp plan, let's reference the loom and if you do want to use a different number, we can do that.
In case the market changes or something like that and there's a larger need for, and you realize, okay, well, we need, there's a need for more, you know, whether it be 60 or 70 or 80,000, you can move it up. Right?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore, the problem with that is all of their analysis was done on 40, for this comprehensive plan amendment that we sent to DEO was based on 40,000.
Gotcha.
So unless they use a loom to convert, all these numbers need to be recalculated for whatever the commission wants to do.
It would have to go back to DEO again.
Yeah.
Iced.
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Okay, just...
I'm not as slow as that.
Try to help look for solutions.
No, appreciate it.
That's, I'm going to, I don't know if there's any public comments, so I'm just going to...
Okay, we'll see if there's any public comments.
Thanks.
I'm looking, I'm here looking at the map. Are there any other public people who wish to speak on this? P-92.
Madam Chair, I do not have anyone signed up and no one's on WebEx for this item.
All right, it's to the board.
So no one will approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like, I'm sorry, it's an ordinance, it's a roll call vote.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District Five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three Chairman Starkey.
Aye. All right, P-93, and that's a rezoning, I think? No, one more.
An ordinance. P-93 was published in Tampa Bay Times on March 23, 2022.
P-93 is PDD 220288 and this is the adoption hearing for this item. Today, we're asking that you accept public comment and adopt by roll call vote. This item was presented to the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties Meeting and Vertical Roundtable on March 16, 2022, went to the local planning agency on 4/7 of 2022, who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the board, and it went to first hearing on May 3, 2022. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code Section 902 Stormwater subsection 902.2.2K to eliminate the requirement to submit as-hilled surveys except in flood hazard areas and other amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability inclusion into the Land Development Code and an effective date.
All right, board members, any questions on this one? That's a good thing. All right, is anyone in the public which to speak to this item?
I have no one signed up for this item and no one on WebEx.
See, now move to roll.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call. I was about to say roll call after we voted.
She meant to say all in favor by roll call?
That's right, that's what I was saying. Y'all interrupted me.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District Five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three Chairman Starkey.
Okay, aye. Passes, and now we are on to P-94.
Yes. Item P-94 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 20, 2022.
P-94 is PDD 227574. This item was published as a continuance. It's for Hill Collier MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Julia Herndon, Walter and Elizabeth Franzel, the Franzel Family Revocable Trust. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Okay, I'll take a motion to continue.
Motion to continue to a date uncertain.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I've lost my script, so I don't know what's on consent and what isn't, so you'll have to help me too.
95 is also a continuance.
Okay, P-95.
Item P-95 was published in Tampa Bay Times on June 1, 2022.
P-95 is PDD 22CU19. Again, this was advertised as a continuance, a conditional use under the name of Angelo Gentti III BB BTS LLC, T-Mobile South LLC. The request is to continue the item to the August 9, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 and date city.
All right. Motion to continue.
Do I have to call for a public comment?
No.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one is continued. P-96.
Would you like me to read the rezonings?
I would like you to read the rezonings.
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If the staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn to the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings, the law in Florida has been your public support, or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action, please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear in the public yet?
I'm good, thank you. If you're here to speak on the reigning items, could you please stand and raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
All right, we're up.
Item P-96 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 18, 2022.
P-96 is PDD 227621. This is in the name, a rezoning in the name of Sandy Lakes Development Corp. Sandy Lakes Purcell is for a change in zoning from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District Trinity Communities to an MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District. It comes to you also with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction that limits the number of units to 164 and basically it prohibits apartment units. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Do you have any maps or anything? I, no one gave it to me.
Yeah, usually when we do a consent item, we don't typically show maps, but here is the aerial of the property. And this is the surrounding zoning of the property, I'm sorry, the future land use usually do zoning first, future land use of the property and the surrounding zoning. Any specific questions you may have? So to the north of the property, we have Inter-Laken Road and Spivey Utility Construction. There's also the District School Board of Pasco County Bus Depot. To the east, there is Folsoma Florida, Inc., and these are typically industrial users, Holloway Pools and Increte Systems. To the south, there are Agricultural Pursuits. And to the west, we have... there are agricultural pursuits. And to the west, we have Odessa Elementary School and agricultural pursuits on the property. This is, this is an old MPUD that is expired, so they're going to MF-one with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction, limiting the uses to either attached, detached units, but they're not wanting to have, there's not going to be apartment units, apartments there.
So townhomes?
Townhomes, villas, all that stuff that you're seeing nowadays in the MF-one district.
Okay.
Really, what they want is one hundred and sixty-four townhomes, but they want to have the ability to do another type of product if they wanted to as well. But it's not going to be apartments.
Okay, just giving me a little heartbreak, because this is in my district, I didn't know about it. And we're working so hard above Interlochen on a county-initiated project, and no one ever mentioned this going through while we're working on that one.
Yeah, so there's a finding of fact in number sixteen that I can read out to you that basically states that at the May third, twenty-twenty-two BCC meeting, the TBRPC presented industrial land use strategy for Pasco County. Also, they did this analysis of this area. The study appears to indicate that a portion of the subject site falls within that area of interest for further analysis for potential future industrial employment generating uses. However, the portion of the site which appears to fall in the study, it consists of a stormwater pond and category-two wetlands. So it was, that may be the reason you may not have heard, because it's a very small area within this parcel that fell within that study, and that area regardless is a stormwater pond and category-two wetland. So it's not something that would be conducive to industrial development.
Yeah, so, all right, I mean, our vision for those parcels there along, Interlochen is light industrial, and I just, you know, we're telling those folks, no, on multifamily, but we're gonna, this one's gonna be okay. But, I mean, if it's townhomes.
Well, in actuality, it's single-family attached. It's just that, that's the only way to get that product, is to go MF-one or MF-two or MF-three, or an MPUD, but the number of units doesn't trigger a master plan on here.
All right. And I see Barbara's coming up.
Barbara's right behind me as well.
Terry's coming up.
Barbara, Will High, sixty-three twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, for the applicant, Maddie Homes. The difference, Commissioner, is that this property is planned for this type of density. It's been res-nine. We're not changing the land use, we're just following the land use. And the intention of Maddie Homes is to do fee simple townhomes. So it is your land use plan that put the mix of uses here. Some of the other projects we've worked on and are working on, both on the Gun Highway Quarter and the Fifty-four Quarter, need a land use change, but this one's following the land use in the zoning district.
I just don't want anyone here objecting when we put industrial across the street.
They had us do a disclosure regarding that.
All right. Okay, I can't make a motion, so.
This is, this is on your consent agenda, so you need to call for, is there anybody in opposition to this application?
Is there anyone in opposition to this item?
I have no one signed up for this item, and no one on WebEx.
All right, seeing no one, we'll leave it on consent. Next one?
Next one is P ninety-seven. Sorry.
Item P ninety-seven was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
So P ninety-seven is PDD twenty-two CU four-two. It's fourteen, sorry, conditional use for Duke Energy Florida for a three hundred and fifteen-foot above-ground level self-supported lattice wireless communication facility in an AC agricultural district. This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Pasadena House Planning and Policy Committee, who heard the item on May eighteenth of twenty-twenty-two, and from the Planning and Development Department.
Okay, so I have questions on this one. And I reached out to Duke, but now I realize I didn't know it was coming so fast. They have, we have not had the chance to comment. It's not a guide. Is it guide?
It's not guide. It's self-supported, so it doesn't have the guide wires. It's self-supported.
So the trend in the industry was to put the PWSFs lower? And this is, isn't this higher than our typical cell tower?
Yeah, so, so we do definitely have Duke here, and we have folks on that are radio frequency consultants who can talk to you, or radio frequency engineers who can talk to you about the trend in the industry. I can tell you about the trend in the industry based on my thirty-year experience in the industry, is that the trend in the industry is moving away from flagpole towers into either monopoles. Sometimes they'll do close mount monopoles, which means that the actual antenna is close to the actual pole, or you'll see this type of use. Additionally, in our pre-two thousand and twelve restated Land Development Code, this type of facility would have been something we called an excluded facility, because it was for a utility provider. But once two thousand, the restated Land Development Code came into effect January twelfth, first, twenty-twelve, all the excluded facilities, that concept went away, so they're coming in for a conditional use. So what I'm trying to say is that prior to two thousand and twelve, you probably wouldn't have seen this provider, this type of application. It would have been a permitted use and just had to gone, have gone through the preliminary site plan and the building permit process. This one's a little different in that the provider is actually, there's co-locations. I believe AT&amp;T is like your anchor tenant, so you're going to have different wireless communication providers co-locating on this tower. Based on what the Land Development Code requires, based on this height, it would be a total of, it would be four on the tower.
Okay, so is Duke using this for some internal purpose?
Yes, absolutely.
That they can't use the high tower that we allow?
Yeah, this is actually a, like a regional facility for Duke. This location is, as you could see, and in your agenda packet, it explains that this is actually a facility that is used by Duke for different purposes. It's, one thing I do want to say, because I did visit the site, it's gated, so it doesn't have public access other than for their employees and the folks who use the lay-down yard that's on the facility and all that. It's the, it's considered the Duke Energy Zephyr Hills complex. It's gated. It's got a metal building, a lay-down yard, it's got a pole barn structure, and it's got covered work areas there. So yes, Duke will be using it for their facility needs.
And so is this, this height was normal? This was an allowable height within our system? In this, in this area?
So, so when you say allowable height within the system, the reason why we're here, it's a conditional use. So basically, and in your finding of facts, in the analysis, I'll tell you where it is.
Yeah, I'm trying to find this.
We actually have a radio frequency consultant who we contact and say, hey, based on what you're seeing out there, what do you think the need is for this tower? And basically, Mr. Monzingo with Omnicom Consulting Group said that there's no other towers out there that meet Duke's needs to co-locate and actually expand its network. So it was found to, for there to be a need for this particular tower.
All right, and the reason I'm asked these questions, and Denise might remember, but Mr. Mariano might remember, when I started seeing the casco, one of the protections we put in place was the visual assault from cell towers. So that's just my concern, so I always try and look at them, but I know they're needed. I love my phone.
Well, yeah.
And certainly Duke's got to be able to communicate. If we have a hurricane, we don't want them to not be able to communicate to each other. I'm just questioning the height.
Madam Chair, since we're talking about it, I know it's a consent item, I think we're going to continue to see more and more of these.
Well, that's what I want to learn.
With.
You are. I have pending applications in so many places.
Right. With the amount of people moving to Pasco County, and so many people having devices and multiple devices these days, I'm not going to name my carrier, but they could use a little help.
Yeah, but they're much lower.
That's a little sarcasm, but, but my service, for example, of one of the largest, if not the largest carrier in the nation, has gone down because of the amount of people that have moved to the area. They can't handle it.
Yeah.
They're going to have to go more. And as, you know, we're not going to get away from these, we're going to see more of them. That's just.
Yeah.
And we have to have them, unfortunately.
But Commissioner Moore, unless something has changed in the science of this, they're closer together and lower. That's why you see the 5G at street height, and then every once in a while, they have a tower.
I think, I say, I think you're going to see higher ones now with the 5G.
Well, that's, that's what I'm learning here. Something's changed.
Yeah, you're not going to see as high as this, because this is Duke, and remember, excluded facility and that type of thing.
Yeah.
And remember, I don't know if you recall, two thousand seventeen, we approved one for the county's P twenty-five system, and that was as tall as this one.
Yeah, I know there's some exceptions, but generally, my experience and all the research I did in, over the years, is that the PWSFs were coming down. You can look around, you can see cell towers where it's empty from half the way. The older ones, they're empty on the top, and the arrays came down. But anyway.
Yeah, and it's really interesting, you're seeing the opposite, because these companies, the anchor tenant is actually vying for that top spot. That's where the anchor tenant wants to be, all the way at the top.
All right, so I will not vote for a guide tower. I'll vote for a lattice tower, but I won't vote for a guide tower. So just letting y'all know that, and anyone who's applying. Okay. All right, this is on consent. Does anyone else want to speak to this item?
Ms. Hernandez, do you have a correction to read on the record?
I do. I have a correction for the resolution in error, because this went to the Pasadena House Planning and Policy Committee. It erroneously stated Planning Commission. So I changed that section in the therefore be resolved section, and that has been provided to the clerk's office. Additionally, there's a sheet that's called a signature sheet from the, to the Board of County Commissioners. In the event that you were to disagree with the Pasadena House Planning and Policy Committee, I switched out Planning Commission for Pasadena House Planning and Policy Committee. Thank you so much for mentioning that.
All right, no one here, no one online speaking opposition?
That is correct.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, P ninety-eight.
P ninety-eight was published in Tampa Bay Times on June first, twenty-twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's called Public Works. This is PW twenty-two zero-zero-nine-zero. This is the North and Valerian Assessment for the east side of the county, that's east of US forty-one. There are eight proven assessment projects, twenty-three streets, four-point-three-eight miles. We sent out four hundred and forty-five notification letters. We received five objections, and we responded to them. To recap, for the entire north, sorry, east and west side, there were a total of twelve projects, thirty-two streets, six-point-four-six miles, one-point-one-seven, approximately one-point-one-seven million dollars in terms of the total assessment, in terms of what would be on the tax bill this year. It's about one hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, eighty-three, sorry. Six hundred and thirty-six total assessment notifications were mailed out for both east and west sides, five objections received. And just to note that the west side tax rule was approved by the BCC on June twelve, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Slaff is recommending approve. I think I have one gentleman who.
Okay. Excuse me. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item?
My name is Randy Pegram. I live on Hamilton Road, which is part of the PBAS number thirty-three-eighty-three. I have the initial agreement that was sent from Pasco County to all of the property owners and the assessment that was made. We received a letter saying that the assessment is going to be applied. However, that would be breach of this contract. I have the initial letter, and it says specifically, the assessment is billed only after the project is complete. The project is not complete. And I think the representatives from the county would vouch for me on that. It specifically says there will be a maintenance performed for existing drainage infrastructure. It has not been done.
Well, I think it's, that's coming.
It, that, no, you can't apply the assessment until the work is complete.
Did you attend the public meeting on this project, so that you learned how this?
When this project initiated, it was a sad experience to begin with, with during the pandemic. And at that time, the government was shutting everything down, saying, do not meet, do not congregate.
This is going to have the tax rules here.
And so it was a lack there, as far as I consider it. Most people wanted to stay home, and it was an invitation to do a Zoom meeting, which didn't work. Then you could call in, the phones didn't work properly. It was an abomination. But it got approved. There were thirty-one votes, I don't know, thirty-one, thirty-one votes, fifty-eight percent of that thirty-one voted yes, and so it was approved. And that's wrong.
Are you saying your road is not paved?
Do you want me to read this to you? What it says is the road would be paved. I even have the contract.
Okay. What road is the road that we're speaking of?
It's at Golden Meadow and Hamilton Lane.
So Ainsley, has Golden Meadow been paved? Maybe I misunderstood.
So Commissioner, Golden Meadows, there are a number of roads there. The road he's speaking to in particular is Hamilton Lane. What needs to be done is the maintenance of the existing swale structure. In terms of repaving, the reconstruction of the base and subbase, that is all completed. It's just the maintenance of the existing drain structure.
And Ainsley, do you have, do you have proposal, do you have it scheduled for maintenance?
We met on-site with Mr. Pegram last week, and our roadway engineer is here, he had put in a work request, and that will be done as soon as it's scheduled.
Madam Chair.
Well, are you done asking your legal questions?
What was the result of the vote, the votes, Ainsley? Usually you have that up there.
Well, this is just going on the tax rules.
Yeah.
I understand. I'm just curious what the results were.
I wonder if you have that with you.
Yeah. You don't know? Yeah, I know, I know it's already been approved. I was just curious what the votes were, because he mentioned it.
So, so your road's been paved, but your drainage system needs some attention. Is that what I'm understanding?
Let me back up just a little bit, if you don't mind. Give me just a minute. At the beginning of this project, when it was approved, I was in touch with the county, and I expressed my concerns, all of my concerns, about what, how things are supposed to proceed. I made it clear, you're supposed to do the drainage first, make sure everything's draining properly, then you do the road. It wasn't done that way. Instead, first of all, they mobilized and made a mess of things. This was APS contractor. They mobilized, made a mess. They were there for about three weeks, marred up their heavy equipment up in yards. Then they pulled out because it was rain soaked, and so they left. Then they had to re-mobilize. When all this time, over a period of about a year, it could have been an easy situation to have the county come out and do the swales and correct culverts, but they didn't. That's where the problem comes in. So now they do the paving. The paving, it's a decent job. They did a good job on it. I did look at the density test, and density test shows that there's three locations that are deficient, but it was passed. The problem is, those three locations, it's where water stands. When water goes up under, there are three ways for water to go: evaporation, runoff, and infiltration, a perp, percolation. When it percolates, it goes in every direction, the easiest way to go. In this particular case, it's going to wash out under the roads, so a road that we're paying that amount of money for, it's going to wash out in five years or less. And now we have the same problem again.
Let me ask, Ainsley, why didn't, why didn't we do the swales before we did the paving?
Typically, we do the squills as it can be scheduled. In this case, it was scheduled afterwards. What to bear in mind is that there is a total reconstruction. The road base here is full-deep reclamation, where we mixed the cement in.
It's a full-deep reclamation?
Full-deep reclamation, and then a repave. So it's just a maintenance of re-grading the swales, and that we have a work order in.
All right. Okay, so it is going to be taken care of, and your road is not going to wash away because it's concrete. So.
To give you the brief of this agreement, though, this contract says specifically that Public Works operators will perform maintenance on the existing drainage infrastructure, and it also says that assessment is billed only after the project is complete. That's what it says.
So I don't think you'll still see this bill until next, when does this get on the bill? November?
It'll be in the November test.
November. So it'll be fixed before November? November, so it'll be fixed before November, right, Ainsley?
Okay.
We'll take care of that little legal thing. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, now, where were we?
So, Madam Chair, I have no one else...
Oh, anyone else?
I have no one else signed up, and no one's on WebEx for the site.
Okay, I thought I saw some other people come in for...
There's other people, there's P ninety-nine and P one hundred.
Okay. Take a motion? Someone want to?
Motion to approve.
I'll take the second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next is P ninety-nine.
Item P ninety-nine was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me. My name is Chris Hanning, Senior Engineer with Department of Public Works. I'm here to present PW twenty-two zero one zero seven is... This is for the PBAS number thirty-four eighty-six, paving of Priggum Road. It's one street that is currently unpaved. The total estimated project cost came out to about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. That brings the maximum cost per ERU to thirty-three thousand, seven hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. The discount amount was eighty-nine thousand, eight hun, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and three cents, which brings down the maximum cost after the discount per ERU to twenty-five thousand, three hundred, forty dollars and eighty-two cents. We had sixteen votes, possible votes. Thirteen responded to the petition. Of those thirteen, nine voted in favor, which is sixty-nine percent. Four voted against, which is thirty-one percent. There will be annual installments payments for ten years at a interest rate of three point two five percent. It's located in East Pasco County, between Reed and Lake Iowa Road. It's a north-south. Here's a picture of the current condition.
What? That's a paved road?
Unpaved.
Oh, unpaved.
I'm sorry. I hope I didn't misspeak.
Wow, that's really disturbing.
I hope I didn't misspeak, that's unpaved, yes, ma'am. Staff recommends approval.
Yeah, okay. All right, Board members, any questions? Okay, is there anyone here in the audience wishes to speak against the PWSS?
I have Don, uh...
Yeah, this is not...
Dan.
I know, I'm just asking. You don't have to come up if you're for it, that's all.
I can't reach your last name, but if you would please come up, Dan. Thank you.
Okay. Didn't you see what I was trying to do? I was trying to move us along.
Good afternoon. I'm actually asking three things. One, I have lot...
Sir, you have to, I'm sorry, you have to say your name first, then your address, and...
Dan Haberly.
Thank you.
It's at PO Box seven oh four, San Antonio, Florida, three, three, five, seven, six.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Lot thirteen on Lake Side Lane has been assessed, and I'd like to get it unbuildable due to Pasco County offsets for a well in a septic tank and existing septic tanks and, and the water line. So there's seventy-five foot offsets from septic tanks and the high water mark. So there's no way to get a well out there, in which case there would be no water, so that's one request.
Is this lot adjacent to, do you live on this lot? No?
No, I live on, on Wells Road, which is kind of behind Lake Gambita, Clear Lake.
So, Ainsley, will you show us the lot and see why you're assessing it, please?
How do I go back?
That is North Ridge.
It's the extreme right green lot, the green, the one that's colored green.
The little thin one?
Yes.
It's fifty foot wide.
And this came about at the workshop, and I mentioned that we would check to see if we could verify what you said. We also got a letter from an attorney in terms of having this assessment removed, and I responded by saying, "If they provide documentation," I cannot present to the Board of documentation to justify why we're removing it from the assessment. So if this documentation comes in...
Yes, and we'll send it to you. I've got just a schematic where some of the existing septic tanks are and stuff, so...
So, but I have a question, Ainsley. So it's, it's kind of a weird lot, that the person that, if the person, I guess if the person next door buys that lot, it's still only one ERU?
Yes.
It's just, they can never build, if they ever build anything on it, then they would have to come, they have to pay.
Right, but you can also have a mobile home on it.
You cannot?
You can.
No, it's de-precircuited, it's a subdivision.
We have not been able to find any justification. I'm not questioning what you're saying, but I need that justification so that I come back to the Board, and I say to the Board, "Here's a reason why we're recommending it to be removed. Based on the information we have, it has to be included in the assessment."
Okay, but there's an opportunity to get excluded once the right information comes in.
Yes, yes.
Does that have to come back in front of us?
Well, we bring it as an adjustment at a later date.
Okay.
Yeah, they just...
You comfortable with that?
I was instructed to come here. The other thing that I'd like to request is we use a cheaper asphalt, like we did Regrode. So it's a less expensive asphalt that they used on Regrode, or you guys approved it on Regrode.
Well, they, they pick the right type of treatment for the right condition. I don't know what's going on here, that, what kind of road it was.
Uh, Regrode was just a lot, we use double chip seal. That is not in the current paving contract. We no longer double chip seal the road, so it's just asphalt we put down.
Any, any questions about that? We can't put it, okay. Think, I think we're kind of stuck with what we've got. Because that's what we are able to put down.
And then, and then my last one is, is to, you guys vote out this ordinance that says that if somebody asks to pave a road, that everybody has to pay for it, especially when Penny for Pasco isn't interested in it, but that's neither here nor there.
Wait, wait, say, say your statement again?
Pasco County...
He's asking you to use Penny for Pasco money on these roads, and that's not part of the, that's not part of the deal.
Well, it's an ordinance that you have that says that if somebody requests it, and by vote, or, you know, the majority rules, you know, everybody has to pay for it within fifteen hundred feet of the road.
But you can't use the sales tax for these types of roads. That's all I'm saying.
And, right, and I, I agree. In which case, you see how nice that dirt road is?
We, we are working on a way to change the way we do this, which we should see in a few months. And eventually, we won't do it this way, no one likes the way we do it. But in the meantime, be, be, be lucky, be happy, you're in the pipeline, that's all I can say. So that it will get done in your lifetime. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
I have a great question.
Yeah.
Ainsley?
Yes, sir.
So we look at his lot, the in-green one, what about the lot right beside it? It looks like it's the same dimensions.
Sorry?
The lot right to the side of it, it looks like it's got the same dimensions.
Yes, but it has a dwelling on it.
Has a dwelling on it?
Yes.
Very good, all set. Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
Move approves.
All in favor?
Wait, wait, I just want to make sure on the record, there's no one on WebEx for this item, and no one else signed up.
The one next to it, back to the west, is that the one you're talking about? That has a well on it, and a septic tank.
So it's, so it's built upon?
Yeah, it's already, it's got a dwelling on it, so...
All right, all, all in favor? Did I already call them? Aye. Okay. Is that our last one?
No. With P one hundred.
P one hundred.
Item P one hundred was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right. We're back to...
I feel like I've already talked about this one today. Okay, so Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. So P one hundred is PDD twenty-two, seven, five, nine, three. It's for North Ridge MPUD. I do want to start with some housekeeping items. It was brought to my attention that there were some ex parte communications that happened over a year ago, some of them. I will provide those to the clerk's office. They were not part of the agenda packet, so the ex partes were with Commissioner Mariano in June of two thousand twenty-one, Commissioner Oakley in June of two thousand twenty-one, Commissioner Starkey in June of two thousand twenty-one, and Commissioner Fitzpatrick in August of two thousand twenty-one. You do have one in your agenda packet, that's for Commissioner Mariano, on June fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Just wanted to state that before I got into the presentation. So the subject location is located in northwest Pasco County, on the south side of County Line Road, County Line Road North, approximately two miles west of the Sun Coast Parkway. The current zoning districts are MPUD, AC, and ER. This is, the MPUD is part of an expired MPUD that was called Woodfield, and that one was approved for seventy-eight single-family dwelling units. To the north of it, you've got County Line Road North, Hernando County to the north. You've got a subdivision by the name of West Preston Woods, right across the parcel entry. And then to the east, you've got a RV resort that's called Tropic, Tropics RV Resort. It's one of those Encore RV Resorts. If the area looks familiar, you know, that area to the east of that is your canon mine of the actual parcel. So that's, that's that area for familiarity. It's approximately one seventy-eight point one five acres. You actually approved a comp plan modification, a comp plan amendment, large scale, to PD with subarea policy for North Ridge, just a few minutes ago. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to MPUD to allow up to forty thousand square feet of commercial and seven hundred and seventy single-family detached units on that acreage, as I stated. The applicant is also proposing to include a, the possibility of a land use equivalency matrix to allow the potential future exchange of seventy single-family detached dwellings into twenty thousand square feet of commercial use. Within your request, there's also some deviations or some variations that are being requested from the Land Development Code. Those include variation from eight oh five point six for restrictions to post-development wetlands and upland buffers within residential lots. This will allow the applicant, the actual developer, I'm sorry, to enter into a reciprocal easement and maintenance agree, agreement. This is specifically, particularly for the non-residential portion, which is not going to be under an HOA or a CBD. Also, the applicant is asking for a variation from LDC nine oh five point two, C one G, for the use of non-invasive plant materials to allow the use of non-invasive existing vegetation. And that would be part of the buffer needs in nine oh five point two. Additionally, the applicant is asking for a variation for nine oh one six D eleven, street design and dedication requirements, to allow an emergency exit on Norman Dew Street. Norman Dew Street has residential dwelling units on it, so the variation will be less disruptive to the folks who live on, on Norman Dew Street.
Can you say that again? They are, they are going to...
There are, yes, I'll show you in the map where Norman Dew Street is. So there's actual driveways that exist on Norman Dew. So that would just be emergency access only. It's not going to be a principal access through Norman Dew. So that's a variation that they're requesting.
Who, the county's asking that, or the...
The applicant is asking that, and staff has done an analysis and found that it is, that it's fine. So this is the master plan, as we saw earlier. The proposal is for commercial along the frontage of County Line Road. The parcel is currently unimproved, it's in the North Market area. I think I've talked about the variations already. The, the actual access to the property is from County Line Road North. And it's a county-maintained Arturo Road with a hundred and sixty feet of right-of-way. And the applicant is coordinating with Pasco and Hernando County for necessary road improvements. I did discuss the loom, the land use equivalency matrix, potential to exchange seventy single-family detached units for twenty thousand square feet of commercial. This was presented to the Planning Commission in Dade City, there was some opposition. Based on the opposition, the applicant agreed to relocate roadway access to the northwest side of the subject area interconnecting with Carlesimo Avenue. It was heard on the regular agenda of the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend the item unanimously with conditions as included in your agenda packet. I think I've discussed most of the items. There are some findings of fact, as Commissioner Mariano stated when we were doing the comp plan regarding the availability of water and sewer to the area, that, you know, that there's conditions that state that this will not happen until that occurs. So I'm here for any questions that you may have on the matter, and the applicant and the applicant's team are here as well.
So, yeah, I have some questions, but...
Sure.
In this day and age, when we're trying to have as much connectivity as possible, I'm really surprised that you're okay to have everybody come in off of County Line Road. Why would we not have them have that act, that...
So it's, it is, it is an access, but it's emergency access only. I may have some folks, I don't know who is exactly on the, on WebEx, but I may have some folks available that can speak to that matter. The actual analysis was found that it would be more disruptive, and it would be easier traffic circulation to not go through that actual Norman Dew Road.
Okay, I see one driveway.
Yeah, there, there are actually several.
See, I'm looking here, this first house on the right, there's a driveway. There's a, there's a couple RVs there. People living there in the RVs? And then there's something in the back there?
Well, yeah, you know, you see a lot of, a lot of different things in Leisure Hills in that subdivision.
Is that allowed?
It's not, you certainly cannot live in an RV. There is a, a provision in the Land Development Code that allows guest RV parking for a total of ten days, once every six months.
Okay.
We don't get too many requests for that, so...
So then the lot just south of it, on the corner of Norman Dew and Oxenham, their driveway is on Oxenham. And that is the only driveway between Oxenham and the property. And I think, you know, good planning is that you have multiple ways to enter into a property. So I'm confused.
Perhaps you can allow the applicant, who also did the transportation study, to, to speak on that matter. And again, I've got some folks on WebEx that can address that item as well.
Barbara Willhite, sixty-three, twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, for the applicant, which is North Ridge, which is also REPA development. Couple of things. One was the amount of square footage, now that we're at the MPUD stage, I can tell you that we did include a loom, and that loom, as Denise said, is estimated to produce twenty thousand square feet of additional, of additional commercial, so the number's really sixty. And we're look, we've been looking at our numbers, and it looks like our plans will actually produce about six hundred and eighty-two units. So we will be having a difference of eighty-eight units that we can use for more commercial. The condition that you were referencing, Commissioner Mariano, is condition thirty-seven B, I think?
Yes.
So that one would need to be modified. Thirty-seven B has the language, "If the forty-foot lots are rear-loaded," excuse me, it says, "In addition," excuse me, this is the language that would be stricken, "in addition, any rear-loaded lots with alleys shall qualify for traditional neighborhood design rate in accounting mobility fee schedule without needing to do, to meet the TND code requirement." So that's the language you want stricken, Commissioner?
What? What is it that you want stricken?
Well, they want to give the TND credits without doing all the TND requirements, just to have them rear-loaded. I mean, I like to see them rear-loaded too, but I don't want to, I mean, we need impact fee transportation laws to help this whole area, so I don't want to give full credits where they're not due.
So they're going to get credits for the part that they do do?
Yeah, whatever they, whatever they're qualified for without exception.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I don't want to just give them just because they're doing one part of it, that they give the full credit.
Okay.
So that would be the language I just read in thirty-seven B. With regard to utilities, the, what's required by the conditions of approval is a utility services agreement with Pasco County. So, and whether Pasco County gets sewer from Hernando, at the moment, that's, doesn't look likely, but, or if Pasco County itself serves the property, the requirements for utility services agreement, so that's what the requirement is. And I suppose if none of those happen, then you never get a utility service agreement.
But if, but if we serve the property, you're going to have to bring service to your property.
Yes, I will put that on the record, that is correct.
Okay.
And we already, we're... And we already, we're already proposing to do water because there's water available and the water line extension's about one-point-six million dollars to the site. Um, so, yes, we understand that and happy to put that on the record. We have no intention of saying you've approved our comp plan and our rezoning and now the county has to pay to serve our project. Happy to put that on the record. That is not our intention. That's why we wrote a finding of fact with staff so that that, we couldn't come back and say that. So, I think that leaves the final question regarding the emergency access, Commissioner?
Just access in general because I, I think I'm pretty consistent here. The more connection points, the better for any development. And so, why you wouldn't take advantage of every single opportunity around there to connect?
And we do have lots of connections. We have two to the west and two to the east and-
Okay, wait, so, I can't tell on this map up here. Where are they to the west?
There's one here.
That dot?
One here, yeah. You just can't see it by scale. There's one here.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you're connecting to County Line.
There's one here.
And what does that connect to? Does that connect to-
Future, future. It's vacant. This is vacant here. It's all vacant around here. So, the issue was about this access down here.
Oh, that's the property that's vacant to your left.
Yeah, there's vacant property here.
So, what about the stubbed-out roads to the south?
So, that's, I just wanted to go through where our connections are on the MPUD plan. So, your question is about this one here. We had proposed it as emergency access. Because of the residences, there are existing residences there.
There's one driveway.
However, so, I, I asked my team from a standpoint of a site plan, does it matter if it's functional access versus emergency? And they said, no. The only thing we'd want the board to do is, we wouldn't want to make that change and then alter our substandard road review. So, if the board would agree and they can do it, if they direct staff to put it in the, in the memo, that we don't have to go through substandard road review because we make that a functional access. We can accommodate that connection in our site plan and modify this MPUD to make that a functional access.
Oh, so you don't want to connect because the road is not in great shape?
No, it's really, it was really, it was put, it was for the neighborhood because a lot of times there is that concern where you put a new project in and then you make access to an existing. But if that's something the board wants to do, from a site plan, site plan perspective, we can accommodate it. It's just our substandard road review, which we've already been through, showed that as emergency access. We just have to include a variation approved at the board level here to that requirement and then we could accommodate if the board wanted us to. So, we're trying to accommodate whatever we can.
Madam Chair?
Uh, uh, one more, one more question. So, I'm, where you have your diamond or, I don't know, I guess that's a diamond, I can't really tell, on the upper-left side, does that coincide with Carlis, Carlesimo Avenue?
So, Carlesio is to the west.
Right.
And so, our obligation is to stub out to our property. We are not adjacent to Carlesimo Drive.
Well, I know, but so, but we're, but our stubout is approximate to where that existing road is to the west. Yeah, so my, my, I guess my question is, are we setting up some kind of grid system for the area? And it is, are you hooking into Carli, is that where Carlesimo could attach?
Hi, Dallas Evans, Civil Engineer, Landis Evans and Partners, thirty-eight-ten Northdale Boulevard in Tampa. That is correct. That does align with Carlesimo.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm happy with that, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Moore?
So, we do have some folks on staff that want to address transportation things if they're allowed to speak.
Okay, well, she called me, so let me go real quick. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate, you know, your statement about the connect, connectability and everything, but the, I don't think today, I mean, they, they brought the site plan, staff approved that, um, if you go make a change, you're going to have to, in my opinion, you're going to have to redo this whole public area because the residents weren't expecting connectability within their neighborhood. So, they weren't ready. I mean, you would have to go back out, let their neighbors know, and probably have a traditional public area or continue it because, as Barbara stated, that's one of the biggest objections usually amongst neighbors are people, you know, connecting to their, to their neighborhoods. So, I'd rather keep it as is.
And then, just, but there's unintended, and I'm going to vote for this, but there's unintended consequences-
Oh, I appreciate what you're saying.
When you make everybody go out in and out the same way-
Yeah.
And we hear it on, in my area, because we don't have as many roads as you. State vote fifty-four, every subdivision, if that's their only in and out, I mean, it's a disaster. And, um, so-
No, I, in Madam Chair-
You gotta have other ways to get around.
I appreciate what you're saying. I just would, you know, this is how it was presented and this is how it's been presented to the neighbors and now all of a sudden we make the changes that we're going to send, you know, however many cars through a neighborhood. I don't think they'd appreciate that very much, not having the opportunity to speak on the matter. So, I would say leave it as is today.
And I, I'm okay, I'm gonna, I've made my point. I'm okay with it. You don't have to have traffic, people speak more if you want, but I just think we should always be looking for connectivity. Does anyone else have any? Okay, I think we have someone here to speak on this.
Yes, we have, um-
Commissioner Mariano is trying to-
I'll, I'll come back.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to call the individual or-
Yeah.
Commissioner Mariano, okay. Ken Rakowski, please come to the podium. And then just state your name and address for the record and I can listen.
Kenneth Rakowski, one-seven-eight-three-five Oxenham Avenue, Spring Hill.
And you were sworn in, you said that?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that's what you said, yeah.
I attended the Commissioner Planning Me, uh, meeting and I was really surprised on how smoothly it went through. There's a lot of things that are not quite right with this plan. One of them is like you were talking with Carlesimo, that's another hundred-acre parcels to the left, to the east, to the west. When the applicant went ahead and stated that, um, they were getting water from, or their wastewater from Hernando County, that wasn't factual because in May twenty-fifth, the Board of Commissioners up in Hernando had turned it down. She also said at the time that, um, funding for the County Line Road widening was approved, which it wasn't. So, now we're stuck with a situation, if this is approved, how are we going to get out of our, basically our only road, which is Alexin? And Alexin intersects with Carlesimo. And it's also the road where the four teenagers were killed because of the, the, uh, the hill that's there. So, as you come down Alexin heading north, you come to Carlesimo and you can't see the Also, now, we have, um, four, no, we have three vitality markers in each of the roads, one at Alexin, one at Farnsworth, and one at Drayton from accidents there. The road is a east-west road at certain times of the year because of the elevation change. You cannot see what's on the other side of that hill and it's going to be right where their road exit's going to be for their sub, the subdivision. So, I really don't understand how this could even be. Now, also with the, uh, the fact that it's zoned for one per acre, which we all are. And I'm sure Commissioner Moreno knows that. He drives that area. He knows that on our side. It's just nothing but large parcels. So, this doesn't fit and it's not going to be good for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this online?
I have no one else signed up and no one on WebEx.
Right, Barbara?
Barbara Willhite for the applicant. I in no way stated that we were definitely getting wastewater from Hernando. We were, we have been aware since shortly after the Hernando County Commission did that of that situation. With regard to County Line Road, the day of Planning Commission was the day after Planning Commission that the governor vetoed the fifty-dollar, fifty-million-dollar allotment for County Line Road. And I had mentioned it was approved by the legislature and I had mentioned that it was under consideration by the governor. It was actually vetoed after, um, after, right after our Planning Commission, interestingly enough. I do have our Transportation Engineer here. I would state that we are going to have to put a light and make improvements at County Line Road at our entrance. That light will start breaking up some traffic along there. So, they, they will create breaks in traffic. I think Mr. Razor can talk about it much better than I can if you'd like for me to bring him up. But we certainly understand, uh, traffic and, and we will be making improvements to County Line Road and they'll have to put a traffic signal in and there's a condition of approval regarding that.
Ms. Pierre?
Jack.
Hey, Barbara. So, currently, you're at seven-seventy for units. It looks like you're going to get out of the, under seven-hundred, down to six-eighty-two, the way it lays out?
That's, that is the number that's on their plans that they prepared.
Okay, you, if you use a matrix and you get up to that number.
Yep, it brings us up to sixty-two thousand, yeah.
Okay, so, I would like to see more commercial. Maybe staff might have to answer the question, but, um, if you've got, if you were able to do more commercial for the same trade-off, would that interest them?
So, we have six-eighty-two to sixty-two thousand. And then, we also have a loom language that says if we have a lower traffic generator, like for example, office generates less than the commercial, we can even get more square footage because we get to make an exchange based upon trips. Basically, we have a set amount of trips, right? That's what's been studied and that's what's been allowed and we can do exchanges based upon those trips for additional uses and square footage. So, that's kind of how that works.
All right, so the trips, is that based upon the size of County Line Road now or what's going to be projected in the future? Or is it a factor?
The study was, let Mike try to help us here.
Good afternoon. Michael Razor with Razor Transportation Consulting, one-nine-zero-four-six Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, Tampa, and I have been sworn. Um, the, the pot of trips that Barbara's referring to is purely a result of the inputs of the entitlements, the initial forty thousand square feet of commercial and the seven-hundred-and-seventy residential units. So, reducing the residential units increases the commercial. So, on a, on a comparison basis, if we were to go to an office product or something like that, which has a lower trip generation rate, the same reduction in single-family units would result in a greater number of square feet allocated to office. So, that's essentially what Barbara was indicating. But I think that your question was, um, regardless of trips, would that forty thousand number, could that be a, a larger number?
So, so if we, if you wanted, if they develop a one or two and they wanted to put more commercial out there, would they have the matrix available to them to put more commercial by reducing more residential?
That matrix is there, yes.
So, that matrix is just a basic foundation, could get more intense, but just a basic foundation?
That's correct. That matrix is there.
Any should agree with that?
But clearly stating that they would have to reduce residential to get-
To get more commercial?
Correct, yes.
Commercial or office?
Both.
Well, so, to us, commercial is something for pecuniary gain, so it could be office, commercial, yeah.
Okay. If it was an office, I'd get even more. Denise, is there any way we can even entice them more to put more commercial out there and increase the matrix up?
So, um, I think that we, we may have touched, touched upon this when we first talked about the comp plan because there, there was a transportation needs analysis, there was a transportation assessment done. So, we would probably have to go back and redo some of that stuff.
Would it be best if we just left it open, Barbara, to have you be able to come back if you did want to go get more rather than going the residential way? I know you, the developer may have a plan already in place that he may, may not want to change, but I wanted to throw that out there to say I'd like to see more commercial.
I think the way the documents are written allow for that flexibility. We know that we're going to have sixty, sixty thousand because we know our unit count, they laid it out, is six-eighty-two. So, we know we're going to be up around sixty thousand available commercial. If we have an office use, it'll be more because the trade is different. And we have no caps on the amount that we can trade. So, I think we've got it all set up in the paperwork to give that flexibility. We can always come back in and do a modification to seek more, especially if it's office, it doesn't go through transportation review. It's kind of interesting that if you add office to an existing project, it doesn't go through transportation review, but if you have it, you do office in your initial, that it goes through transportation review. Kind of a quirk in our code, but, so.
All right, so Denise, is there a way that we can do something right now to make it easier for them? Because obviously, time is money and time delays go, that we could give them an extra incentive to put even more, uh, commercial up there as opposed to residential?
So, I believe Ms. Willhite stated that the way that the actual, um, the, the conditions are written and the loom is written, it doesn't provide a max cap, provides the opportunity to do that, um, within the loom. I just, I'm thinking out loud at the podium sadly.
The approval of this conversion is as liberal as the board can be-
It's administrative.
... without going back through and doing, doing more analysis.
Yeah.
Continuing this and doing analysis. I mean, that, because they, right now, what I'm, what I'm seeing in the documents is for every seventy-two single-family residential units, they can get twenty thousand square feet of commercial. If you play with that and move out of ITE, then it's not based on anything. So, right now, it's set up under the International Transportation Engineers matrices. It's defensible.
Right, right. Anything more than that wouldn't be defensible.
Right.
Do you think there's any chance we could get it more liberal for them to get more commercial in exchange for the residential? Would it be a waste of time?
So, here's an idea. Because I've stood here and said that we're going to, to exchange for, um, to get to sixty and it's trip equivalent, so we wouldn't have to go back through unless, let's see what the county attorney thinks, but could we change these numbers now to sixty thousand and seven hundred? So, that, we can't do any more than seven hundred. So, we have already like de facto made that exchange of that extra seventy to sixty thousand. So, you know what you approved today is sixty thousand and seven hundred. Would that be objectionable, Mr. County Attorney?
I mean, you could, you could take out of the MPUD right now the seventy-two residential units and give them the sixty thousand. We can change that in the document today and then they wouldn't have to do that initial conversion. That could-
And then you would know what the numbers are. It wouldn't be left to us to do seven-seventy residential. We would know that we can only do seven hundred and that the sixty thousand today.
I'm assuming that if staff approved the math, that the math works and so, you can make that change right now.
Yes, noted. We'll have to bring some changes to the clerk's office, but yes, we could take care of that.
All right, are we ready?
Well, I just, one, some more thought. So, it might address the Commissioner's concerns because I think office is exempt from traffic analysis. So, there may be a way that they could add more off. I would need to ask, Mr., who's your traffic person? Did he assume that, did he, I don't know if that affects your access management analysis, but-
Yeah, we're done with that. That's conceptual with the current time. Do we have a second?
So, in theory, they could add office as an exempt use. So, they could add more office without triggering a new traffic analysis. Not retail, though. But if you're, if you want more office there, they in theory could, we could give the, in the entitlement for more office without having to start any whole new analysis.
Okay.
He's still going to have to deal with it at access management stage when they come in for site plan approval, but from a traffic, now, I say that, but then you just approve the comp plan, but it has a cap, so I don't know, you'd have to revisit the comp plan to do that, though. But office is exempt from traffic analysis.
So, as of right now, they're looking at doing sixty thousand commercial, which is retail, or, uh, and that would be at seven hundred units for the cap. So, how could I, could I-
I don't remember what the comp, I don't have the comp plan memorized. I don't know if it has a cap on, if it has a cap on the amount. I need somebody to help me with that cap is. Yeah, I mean, normally, we would allow them to increase it. We, we encourage office, okay? So, office is exempt from traffic analysis. If the comp plan didn't have this cap of forty thousand square feet, we could allow them in the MPUD to go, add a lot more office if we wanted to. But, but now, we've already approved the comp plan with this cap of forty thousand square feet. So, I don't know how to do that without revisiting the comp plan.
No, we just did the comp plan. No, we just did the comp plan. Could we go back to it?
Oh my goodness.
Commissioner Stark, that's exactly what I was trying to do. I was just trying to find out, why am I capping myself at 40,000 square feet? When I know I could do 400? So if I get it, if we're going to go revisit that while we're here right now.
Are you sure you want to commercially strip out County Line Road?
So Jeff, do you think they could do a motion to reconsider the comp plan at this stage? How, because D E O sent, sent with this?
But I got to think that if I can promote more office space, especially up there, right? That's got to be nothing but positive for us. And if I can do that, and even if it delays D E O for you guys down the road, I don't think that's a problem. You're going to get extra entitlements without having to do any more.
I mean, one thing you could do is you could give them the additional office in the MPD, but say it's subject to the comp plan being amended. And then whenever they, you get the comp plan amended, they can do that. I mean, I don't, I don't know how to fix the comp plan problem. I can fix the traffic problem for office. I can't fix your comp plan problem. Because that's a pretty hard cap.
But to an extent, you're designing this project for an applicant that already has a plan in place for...
And they may, and they may not change. But if they can get so much more office and...
Well, let me just say this. Barbara's well aware and her clients well aware that we give office away for free. So they could have gotten, I mean, they could have asked for, they could have asked for a million square feet of office and we would have said, heck yes, bring it. But they didn't ask for it. So that's, they know, they fully know. Like Mr. Razor knows, Barbara knows that if they had included office entitlements here, we would have said it was exempt. But they never asked for it. So to Jeff's point, you're sort of foisting office upon somebody that doesn't even want it. Well, because they could, if they had asked for it, we would have given it to them.
I mean, David, I just look at, David, I just look at, they've got 10 acres of frontage right on Conneley Road. And of it, they're going to use probably two-thirds of it. And if, and if I could put an incentive in them to go build more offices, especially if I could trade off residential.
The only thing I tell you is that we incentivize the heck out of office. We don't, you know, we don't exempt them from timing and phasing. We pay zero mobility fees. The whole world knows this. But they never asked for it. So other than it's a potential use that's allowed under their retail slash office.
Well, I think their big money was going to be the residential. That's what, that's what they pretty much had sold, like a lot of these projects do. They're going to be locked in to do in the residential. But if they had to give up the part of the commercial, so be it. And maybe thinking they just could come back later on to go the other way.
I guess what I'm saying, though, is that up to 60,000 they're allowed to have, if they want to do office instead of retail, our mobility fees incentivize that. They'd pay zero mobility fees if they did office. They're going to pay a heck of a lot of mobility fees if they do retail.
All right, but if they've got a retail, it's coming in, they're paying it, they're paying it. So it wouldn't affect them. But if I've got an office that may be a little bit later coming down the road, if I have that opportunity forward, then make it easy to say, you know what? We can just go flip the switch and get it in there. Maybe they designed it that way to leave that office space open until they get the right buyer for it.
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner, you mind if I just, you mind if I just one thing? I don't, we never met on this, right? We meet on this?
We did not.
Not to meet with staff on this either, okay. First off, I've seen it. But did you guys, did anybody else meet on this?
Everybody else.
Oh, okay. All right, well. Anybody else vote no? Anyways, since you guys did meet, I don't know where. It seems like there was some confusion on what was actually coming out. That's what it seems. We're not, you're not going to work this out right now.
I know.
I'm about to move to continue this. You guys need to sit down, hold on, time out. You guys need to sit down and like get this thing figured out. Because I'm not going to sit here while we debate how we're going to do this for the next 30 minutes. This should have been done, hold on, let me finish.
And we thought we did.
Let me finish, let me finish. This should have been done previous. Everybody should have been on the same page before we brought it across, my opinion. But I don't want to hear, let's try to figure this out on the spot. So I'm moving to continue unless we get a motion to approve or...
Can I jump in, please, on behalf of my client who has a closing coming up? It's extended as far as you can.
I understand, but I'm not going to sit here for the next 30 minutes. Us going back and forth. You guys shouldn't have met with me, too. I could have helped you along.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve it with the 60,000 office retail entitlements with a 700-unit cap, eliminating the T and D reductions unless fully authorized by staff's record, you know, staff's regular regulations.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
All right. But I agree, let's try and not redo projects from up here if possible. But we got that one through. Okay, we are on R...
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, ready for Pasco. And while, are you presenting on this, David? Who's doing the presentation? While whoever's doing the presentation is coming up, if anyone. I just want to make the point, because people have asked if if we would have some citizen oversight committees similar to the school district. And I just wanted to reiterate that we do have citizen oversight committees. We have, on our environmental lands, we have a committee that is appointed by the B O C C. On the jobs and economic opportunities commit, um, we have the, we have the jobs and economic opportunities committee, the J E O C, appointed by the B O C C. We have the B P A C committee appointed by us that does things all trails and sidewalks. And we have the citizens advisory committee that talks about transportation issues. So we have one, two, three, we don't have one oversight committee, we have four.
Yeah.
So I think we're covered. All right, Ralph, you're doing the penny.
Good afternoon, sorry about that. Ralph Lehrer, intergovernmental affairs officer. So today I bring before you the proposed resolution and project list for adoption, for consideration and adoption in order to set forth the projects to be funded for the 2025 Penny for Pasco. While a resolution is not required by Florida statute, section 212.055, it does provide a greater level of detail of how the board intends to use its distribution of the penny proceeds than is contained in the proposal ordinance and living in the surtax. The county administrator has met with each of you and gone over the attached project list. So that is what's for consideration.
Right, does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So a couple of things in the list were given. I went over some of the tweaks that were not done right, so they're fixing that. But just to say that the school district of Pineview Elementary, actually, I think it's District Two? As opposed to District Five?
Is that the one in...
Collier, I think it is?
Or Corrigan?
Pineview?
There's Pineview, there's Pine, there's a few Pines.
Parkway Boulevard. It says District Five? It says District Five, should be District Two. District Two? And on the bicycle trail connections, we've got it listed. Where's the bicycle, Bayou Trail connection from River Gulf Boulevard to Bailey Avenue? It says partner with the city of Port Ritchie. But I'm just wondering, should Port Ritchie be in the mix as well? I don't know, they wouldn't be as far as, I don't do Pasco as both.
Can't hear that one.
It will actually also be a coordination with Port Ritchie as well, so.
Okay.
Just saying, maybe it should be worth it. And in some of my discussions, we talked about infrastructure being what could be utility lines such as on Conneley Road. I think it should also work as far as could be a roadway through or next to an industrial park, such as the Vision Road on Hicks Road. If we're comfortable keeping the flexibility, I like, as Mr. Carbella said, the flexibility is there to go do it. And lastly, one of the improvements we're looking at is bridge rehabilitation. Technically, the roadway, Old Dixie Highway has got that bridge that was lowered down. We're trying to like look at. And I would just want to make sure we consider that, even though the span of what it is right now may not be full bridge width, but if it can be considered as a project. I'm comfortable.
So I think, I think the bridges that are listed here are, and again, the beauty of how this has been structured is to not bind us. These are projects we feel that we can realistically accomplish within the next five to seven years. The Old Dixie Bridge is actually going to be evaluated as part of the trail project. And we have a study that's going forward to evaluate the structural capacity of that, to support that. And then we can make some decisions on that. I don't think that there's anything in here that would preclude future projects or bind or unbind future boards. The ones that we currently have in here, though, we do feel that we do have priorities on due to, due to conditions at the bridge. And I've got staff here that can talk to that. But I don't think we've precluded anything by this. It's just not explicitly called out because there's still more to be done.
And again, we've had discussion, but I just wanted to bring it before the board's open.
Well, on the same vein, I would say there are, I have brought up numerous road connections that I think need to be made. There's a very small one in my district by, where we just bought that new parcel. Lake, what's it, Oaks at Riverside? Oaks at Riverside?
It's got the tree in it.
There's a very small strip that the developer said he would give to us.
You don't need to put that on your pin.
I don't need to put that on here.
And also Blueberry and Ostin.
Yeah, this is just specifically penny projects.
Yeah. That shouldn't be a part of this, but we can address that.
Those would be part of your other capital program.
Yeah.
All right, then I'm good. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Does this require a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That one's done. We did P-86, P-87, towing, towing vehicles.
R-87. At your last, last board meeting, I was asked to revise the towing fee structure resolution to add the ability to do a surcharge for diesel fuel. You'll find there's an, on page four of five of the resolution, there's a new five. Anytime the price of diesel fuel exceeds $3 per gallon as reported by the federal government for the lower Atlantic states. And then it's got a designation of PADD1C. Mileage rates, the subject of the resolution may be increased or decreased in the following manner. And the little chart there for percentages of change have been included in the resolution. I believe that accomplishes what the board's desire was.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I mean, hopefully, I think everybody was okay with this last time. And thank you to the county attorney's office and the people, just nice of your team for looking at this through. We just want to make sure that we still have these trucks on the road and taking care of the citizens. And as we know, fuel prices bid up. Everybody else is unfortunately having to raise their prices. They were kind of stuck and possibly losing money. I'm going to make sure they're there, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, a little discussion.
More discussion?
Just a quick discussion. You know, we talked about cleanup after some of the accidents that go on. And I'll say that somehow we need to see if there's a way to better follow up with them. There was an accident, I think, by Cranes Roost on Little Road. And in front of it, there's really looks like the lower side of a front end of a car sitting on the grass where there was like intersection. So as we do help these guys make their money, we, I think we need to try to like follow up a little bit to make sure they're doing a full cleanup rather than leaving stuff to the side of the road.
Probably a good discussion that the team can have, I would assume, right?
It happens every so often, yeah.
Boers in charge of that.
Yeah, we, we changed the ordinance to, to make it more clear that they had a responsibility to do that. So that they're, they probably think the issue is identifying which tow company had the scene. But, but clearly, there, you did tighten things up.
Maybe we need a letter sent out from the team as a reminder to refer to the ordinance.
Yeah.
That work, Commissioner?
No, it's good.
And whose responsibility is it to clean up the traffic area?
The tow, the tow company that's called in.
Okay. We, I called the boat, right?
I gotta call it now.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Done. You're, we did P-88, so we are on P-89.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. R-89 is a resolution establishing the preliminary annual disposal assessment, tipping fees and other rates for the solid waste disposal and resource recovery system. Does the board have any questions?
None, seems like you're up here all the time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got your money. Aye, P-R-90.
I cannot beat that, so I apologize already. Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Marcy Yesberg, Director of Community Development, here to speak about the Home American Rescue Plan funding, the new allocation plan. So when President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan, in addition to funding that came to counties, cities, funding also went to some of the departments, including housing and urban development. And $5 million was set out to assist individually or individuals or households, assist individually or individuals or households that were experiencing homelessness. So basically, it is a combination of our home investment partnership funds, which is for affordable housing, and our emergency solutions grant, which is just for homeless people. So it's funding to house people that are experiencing homelessness. So we are receiving just under $4.5 million. The funds were allocated on April 8th, 2021. And we have to expend them by 2030. They finally got the message that they should stop giving us money and asking us to spend it in nine months. So, so in order to start this process, it starts with this allocation plan, with you approving the plan that we transmit to HUD. And, and kind of an F Y I, there are 600 of these. We're part of 600 entitlement communities. Eighty-seven plans have gone forward and 37 of them have been approved. So keep your fingers crossed that this one will get approval. We did a really good job with outreach and gaps analysis, which are the two major reasons other plans were not being approved. So here's some eligible activities that we could do. We could produce or preserve affordable housing. We could do tenant-based rental assistance. We can do supportive services. And we could purchase and develop non-congregate shelter, which would be individual units, not bunk beds in one big room. So the populations are those identifying, serving individuals and households that are homeless, at risk of homelessness, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, and other populations where supportive services would prevent individuals or families from becoming homeless, including veterans and families of veterans. So as part of the consultation process, which was a very big thing for HUD this year, was making sure that we met with a lot of the partners in Pasco County. So we met with the Coalition, the Continuum of Care, United Way Salvation Army, Pasco Sheriff, Sunrise of Pasco, which are domestic violence provider, Pasco County Housing Authority, Vincent House, Veterans Administration and Catholic Charities, talking to them about what they see are the greatest needs, going over the gaps analysis with them and getting kind of their, their input and their buy-in. And so based on all of these meetings and the findings of our gaps analysis, we are proposing in our allocation plan to prioritize the following activities. Permanent supportive housing. So permanent supportive housing is only funded at 7%, yet 42% of our homeless population are chronically homeless. So they're very much under-resourced. Housing for single adults. Families represent 17, just under 18% of our homeless population, but they take almost 50% of our bed inventory. And 91% of the households experiencing homelessness are adults without children. And ninety-one percent of the households experiencing homelessness are adults without children. Non-congregate shelters. Sixty-one percent of our people experiencing homelessness are unsheltered, and yet the non-congregate shelter beds were at a hundred percent capacity. Those were beds that we were paying for in hotels, but congregate shelter beds were utilized at fifty percent. So because of that information, we're going to focus on production and preservation of affordable housing to either acquire or construct it or rehab current housing. And then on the other funding sources, if you go to the next page, we are looking for you to approve the plan, direct the chairman to sign the documents, and then this will transmit the plan to HUD. We have put out a request for proposals, actually, this is the second time around, for proposals from our partners for this funding. That's usually what we do. So those have come in. I think we got about six or seven applications. And so we will review those at the beginning of August with a committee and then bring the proposed projects back to you. So today, you're just looking at the allocation plan and signing the documents.
Okay, so this five million, is that what the number said?
Four and a half.
Is that all we're getting between now and twenty thirty?
Yes. This is a special, well, this is just a special program, Home ARP. This isn't like our regular home money, which we get every year. So this is a one-time deal.
And they're giving you the twenty thirty to spend this?
Yes.
That's a long time. I hope we can put it to use much sooner than that.
Well, I do too, but we all know that if it's, if we're going to build, sometimes it takes three to four years just to get it out of the ground, so.
Yeah.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion, please. Discussion, please. Marcy, a while ago, we talked, and I've talked about this several years now. The rope center over in Hudson, they have a building that we built for them. It houses twenty men in bunks, twenty women in bunks. Usually the women are like seven or eight and stay there because they don't want to stay there in that situation. They've offered the land that they have, that they could actually build a single structure, which would take, let's say, twenty women, which would free up twenty more beds for the males. They said they'd be willing to work with details to make that happen. Had you explored that with them, and so how'd that turn out?
So that type of project would not be eligible because it's congregate shelter. It's not non-congregative. So there are twenty beds in one room.
No, no.
And we have, we have talked to them. Yes.
They would build individual structures for the ladies, so they would have their own separate rooms, not the congregant, we have twenty in a row.
Yep, so they haven't presented that to me, and they did not apply when this request for proposals went out. So I have not seen an application from them.
Yeah, and again, some of the things that they do with their folks may have prevented them coming forward, but I know they wanted to do it. They've asked to go do it several times. Let me ask the board a question. Earlier today, we talked about trying to take care of seniors that may not, that aren't on the list as far as getting meals. To me, with the inflation rate, they're at risk. I think if we took a look at what the numbers would be to maybe take a lot of this money, even over a several, several years period of time, that would that be something we want to take a look at as far as funding from this source? As they, I think they'd be at risk if they just had a ten percent decrease in their spendable income.
So are you saying to build housing for?
I left the housing aside for now. I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about that. I'm talking about just taking seniors that are on the list that aren't getting meals to go take part of the money and go get those seniors that are on the list and fund them through this funding source.
There are three hundred and sixty-nine on the waitlist at this time, and I am going to talk with Area Agency on Aging about the additional funding that they have to see if we can move the, utilize those funds for the additional meals at the next board meeting.
Jack, I wouldn't want to touch this, and I don't know if we even legally can. I, I think they're looking at that other issue, and they'll be bringing it back to us for a solution. But I do, you know, like the idea of if there's land available and we could get something going quickly, do we not want to look at it? And if, like the rope property, if they're willing to, I don't, you know.
So it could still get looked at, even if we approve this today?
They have that other property too, right, where they have their, I don't know if they still have it, because I went to it, where they have their, their little store. Don't they own that, their little thrift?
Uh, yes, yeah.
So.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I think the question would be, can I understand where you're coming from? If, if the funds, can they actually be used for that?
She said no. I saw her shaking her head.
Okay, well, I'm going to, for the record, so.
For the, for the meals?
Feeding the elderly?
No.
No, this is.
This is housing.
And we need the housing, and we need this money to go for housing.
So back to kind of Commissioner Mario's statement about looking after our seniors. Go back again, show us what your plan is to take care of some of our low-income seniors with the plan.
So this is not for low-income seniors. These are for people that are experiencing homelessness. And we have noticed a trend, trend that more and more of our homeless are, are growing in age.
Right, right.
So certainly the most vulnerable people will be taken off the streets and put into housing.
Yeah, so we say, when we say homeless, are we saying these people are homeless today? Or they have, are they possibly at risk of being homeless?
Our first priority would be for those that are homeless, because that's the biggest population and the least resourced. And then after that, we would go into vulnerable populations that, that perhaps we could prevent homelessness.
Right.
We could also do that, though, with other funds, whereas these funds are the only funds that we have right now for buildings. So, so this is a really good opportunity to bring a lot of units online.
You know, you know what? I get a lot of stuff on this. Yeah.
We can't use it now, we can't use it.
Yeah, can't use it. Um, so I, I read a lot on this, and I'm seeing, some of the creative things I've seen from other areas is they get, well, I think I told you, in Palm Beach County, every development that comes in, it used to be a DRI. You had to put ten, ten percent aside for affordable housing. They require five percent of the housing that comes in, any new development has, has to have affordable housing component to it, which could be a quadruplex, you know, duplexes, and they get, they blend seamlessly into the community. Other places, they just donate, they just donate some of the land in their development. They give them a couple lots on the end of the street. I think we should start asking, because that's the best way to blend these kind of folks in, is to not put them all in one building in the bad area of town and away from any life or anything. It's to just, you don't even notice it. Just blend them in.
Madam?
What, Kathy wanted to say something?
Sure. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Minister of Public Services. So I just want to reiterate for this funding, the, our, the proposals went out. Applications are in. It has been closed. So if I'm hearing Marcy correctly, she's putting a team together to review those applications, to see what projects came through, and that will come back to you in August for your final approval. So we don't know what the, I don't know if you've read the applications, so, so she has seen some of them. The committee has not. I'm sure that's going to be scheduled, so it's, it's, they're out, it's closed, and let the team review in the application. So I just wanted to bring that.
Can we move on, because they're going to bring this back?
Okay, good, all right.
Oh, sorry.
Wait, we did the first and the second?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion, second.
Madam Chair.
Again, in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, we're talking about inclusionary housing, and then we, do we, we have to make a motion to ask staff to bring that back to us in an ordinance?
Well, we just have to have a discussion, see if there's other, other, Marcy's got to make the rounds, see if there's support.
Because I heard it would help reduce the senior homeless population by having, say, you had a five-story building if you put two senior units on each floor.
I don't want to get into the design of it now. I just wanted to throw out the concept. All right, P ninety-one.
That concept would come through your land development code.
A land development code.
Would not come through.
And just like we're talking about redoing it with ADUs, allowing more ADUs. P ninety-one.
You've already done that. You finished the agenda.
P ninety-two. Oh, I'm going to pay you?
You're just delaying it.
What am I doing? All right, let's move on. Commissioner Oakley, old business.
Old business.
No, I don't want to go back. I'm just moving down my book.
Run the room again, real quick.
And I can't play around cold medicine because that's worn you.
Recap.
Recap, yeah. I would like to thank Real Property and Planning Team for their extra efforts. And the Tucker family reached out to us with questions regarding the Tucker Cemetery, which was deeded to Pasco County in nineteen sixty-five. And I'd like to thank Heather, Josh, and Nick for their time and research in that project, finding that information, finding out that it was dedicated or given to Pasco County for maintenance, and they're looking further into what they can do to help bring some closure, to find out who's there, who's taking care of it, and I think they're probably going to help out in some of that maintenance of Tucker Cemetery. Also, I'd like to bring up the fact that, you know, we do a lot of things here in the county, and the county's been moving really fast, and all with COVID and everything else that we've gone through and our staff has gone through. We've got to be very appreciative for, of course, Dan's service while he was here and the training he did for his assistants that helped carry us on. But all of staff, all of the departments, be very thankful for the work they do. They're, they're pushed to the limit. I mean, they have stacks of paperwork in front of them. First time I'd ever heard it, but even Mr. Goldstein had, had a stack after he came back from vacation he had to work on, so. So they didn't leave him out while he was gone. But the fact of it is, I think we're all very appreciative of all of our staff. We appreciate the extra work you do. Even though at times we try to give direction and, and things to lead us further down the trail to get through with some of your work. So we, we try to push to continue that and speed it up and streamline it the best we can because it's important for our county and it's important for us to get these things done. We have a lot of job, jobs coming forward to be in our county based on a lot of projects we have coming forward. Those are very important for us. They help pay the bill. And so not only are, they will pay the bill, but they'll also provide work for, for all of our citizens. So we got to be thankful. But I'm just thankful for all our, our staff and all of their assistance and their teams because we're all a team together. We need to realize that. Sometimes I maybe we forget that, but we're all working together. And just very appreciative of all the staff. I had the issue on King Lake, and Mike, you may want to look into this. The deal on King Lake where Kenton Road, I've been looking at for quite a while because we had some flooding over in Nowood Acres on the east side of Efferson. And I've, I've noticed that some of the drainage that used to be in King Lake area was to the north going through Marada. But ever since Efferson's come and Marada had started, there's no water draining to the north at all. It's all been pushed out to the west side of King Lake. And through the three gentlemen that were here speaking earlier, they were speaking the truth. They're being flooded on that, on that west side because the outlets they used to have, and one of them especially goes under Tender Road, going to the north through Marada to the, I believe it goes all the way to the Cypress Creek area. That's no longer happening. So somehow I'd like, like somebody, Mike Cabala and his team, maybe reach out to, Donald Carey is very much a well, well aware of what's going on there, and I'd love to look further because somebody's caused a real issue and it's caused some of ours. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's one citizen or a hundred citizens. Every citizen counts here in Pasco County, and that should be corrected. There's a flood issue there caused by development, and we should not have that happening. And no development should cause that on another individual in our county. So if you will look in, into that and, let's see. I guess that's all except for Dan. Again, I appreciate all that you've done for us. I appreciate the training you gave our, your AKAs and, and making sure they were doing their job, and you allowed them to do their job. I appreciate that, so I, we won't forget you and we'll just keep going forward. But you set us on the right trail to be very premier in this county, and, and the future is bright. Come back to see us when you can, and as a citizen, we'll be willing to help you. All right, with that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to cut out a couple things so Dave can get on his plane and get on his way after the meeting. But, okay, real quick, Port Ritchie City Council, in June, the Port Ritchie City Council did vote to remove another neighborhood from the community redevelopment area, area boundary. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. I mentioned back in, in May that they had voted on that. The CRA, CRA Board, came and talked about CRA Board, voted on that. So same five people that are in the city council and the CRA Board. Thank you to the mayor and city council for moving that in the right direction. Really appreciate the relationship we now have with that city council and city manager. Greatly appreciated. Number two, U.S. Figure Skating National Showcase, another big event, talking about tourism coming to Pasco County. So we have a really cool event happening in August. The U.S. Figure Skating National Showcase will be at the Advent Health Center Ice in Wesley Chapel the first week of August. Four hundred figure skaters and their families across the United States will be here to compete. So again, very, very exciting times for tourism in Pasco County. So thank you to Champions Edge Skating Club, Center Ice, and our tourism office, Experience Florida Sports Coast, for bringing that here. You know, I say it often, we know we are Florida Sports Coast, not just because we like sports, because it was a strategy and business decision that we all made as a TDC and a commission to bring these things here. So again, four hundred families coming to, four hundred skaters and their families coming to Pasco County, eat in our hotel, eat in our restaurants, stay in our hotels, and shop in Pasco County stores. I had a discussion with Mr. Stein-Snyder in reference to door-to-door solicitors. Do we find anything out, Mr. Stein-Snyder?
I have not had an opportunity.
And I understand. So I will bring, I will bring it back. I will bring it back. I don't know if you guys have, if you've heard from citizens or neighbors or friends that it seems that the aggressive door solicitors have returned. Not that they ever have left, but it's becoming more and more prevalent once again, especially, I, I say my district because that's who I hear from the most, right? So the Wesley Chapel area. I won't talk about some of the experiences I had, but they do seem to come to my door quite often as well. Mr. Stein-Snyder, we, and I discussed this earlier. He's going to look, I don't know, maybe there's, we think there may be an ordinance already on the books. We're really not sure, which requires them to register. If not, I really think we should follow through on that. And if they are already required to register, how can we do a better job of following through on that? Because, you know, some of these people, they don't, they come up, they don't have, they don't have badges on, they don't have uniforms. They scare people sometimes, right? And I don't know how many people really prefer these people to walk up into their, to their door and all hours of the day and all hours of the evening. Again, you know, most recently in my house, again, without giving too many details, I mean, the person wouldn't leave. Literally wouldn't leave. But I'm hearing it more and more from people, and I see them walking up and down the streets. And some of these neighborhoods do have no solicitation signs.
Yeah.
You could obviously call the SO's office and, and report them, but it's, is a process. So we'll discuss it next time. I'd like to do something to, I'll be honest with you, run them out of the county.
Section seventy-four dash one, the Pasco County Solicitors and Charitable Solicitation Ordinance, last adopt, last modified in nineteen ninety-two.
Oh, so it's been a few years.
It's been a few years.
I was just a young type back then.
So Commissioner Moore, should I speak on this?
Yeah.
So home solicitation, they're supposed to register with my office, and we issue them credentials that they're supposed to present.
Very good.
So I want to let you know that's.
That's great. I mean, that's good we have that. I guess we just have to discuss. And again, I don't, I won't get into the weeds on it today. We'll bring it back so we can get out of here. No, no, I appreciate it. That's, that's good to know. So maybe you and I can have a discussion. I'll have a discussion with Mr. Stein-Snyder, bring something back to see if we could put a little bit more pressure on these folks. Sorry, I mean, I mean, at nine o'clock at night, you really want somebody knocking on your door scaring the bejebers out of you? on your door scaring the bejebers out of you?
Should any person post on his leased or owned real property in obvious and immediate visible place a sign stating no solicitor, no solicitors, no soliciting, no trespassing, any holder of a permit issued under this section shall honor such signs and not solicit the premises.
So when we have that discussion, let's.
So the question is going to be enforcement.
Enforcement, and let's look at what our current situation, you know, what are the fines that are, you know, instituted if they don't come get a permit? How much does that permit cost? Is it free? You know, I don't.
It's minimal.
It's minimal?
It's minimal.
It should be $10,000.
And we do have a list of the ones that have a permit issued on our website so you can check.
Yeah, I'm going to guess that 99.9% of them.
Maybe.
That's it. I'll bring it back next time so we can keep moving. Thank you.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Okay. I don't know what they have up there, so I'll start with, I would like to recognize the Solid Waste Team. They had picked up about six piles of trash in the right-of-way and several mattresses, so great job keeping Pasco clean so we can become a premier county. Last week was the FAC convention, and I was able to be recognized for graduating the certified county commissioner's certification. So that was very exciting to participate in that for the past year. Next, I would like to, I'm always happy to support the first responders. You had the Crew to 40. They had their craft beer grant opening. They offer a line of educational courses for the first responders, and their primary annual project is to, is their future first responder scholarship program because 5A offers a program for the, our teens in the high school program. Next, we held our second annual commissioner's baby shower at the Starkey Market benefiting Sunrise Pasco. I would like to thank you, Madam Chair, Brian Hoben's staff and the staff that have organized and supported the event. A special thank you to Lain Mendelson for his company's large donation. They not only donated baby supplies, but bedding, towels, personal care items, and even sports gear. Also, oh, that was from the FAC convention, the FAC president, former Senator Constantine. And then we also have, just in case any kids are outside playing in the New Port Ritchie area, they do have the African snails that are back in the area. And I know a couple neighbors, well, a couple people in the community have mentioned that they've seen them. They can cause meningitis. And I know if my children were not aware, they would probably be out there playing and looking for snails to play with. So just to make sure that they're not out there playing with the snails. And I will leave the next one for next round. Thank you.
Commissioner Mariana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say that just yesterday, code enforcement, I'm not code enforcement, but stormwater team went out to Westport, you mentioned it earlier, did a phenomenal job getting out there right away and getting the thing cleaned up. And I just want to give Mike, you and your team accolades for doing such a phenomenal job. The people there, they saw what we're doing, and I think it's going to lead to a quick solution. Panhandlers, I still see them now and then. Sometimes they're coming after five. So I think we need to kind of like have a crew of code folks that can work an hour or two later if need be to go out there. Otherwise, they're just going to just slowly accumulate to get back in again. People are very, very pleased. They don't seem as much as they used to, so I want to make sure we keep on going there. That's all I have. Thank you.
County Attorney.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things. One, there's been a lot of discussion recently about fire rescue, but they recently were awarded the American Heart Association Gold Plus Award for Free Hospital Cardiac Care. That's the second year in a row, and that's, we are one of only 33 agencies in the entire country that have achieved that award. So a lot of good work going on out there. Those of you on the west side may have noticed that the westbound lanes on Ridge Road are open, lanes three and four. For the next couple of months, there will still be lane closures from time to time. There's only one going eastbound right now, unless there's still work to be done inside the right-of-way landscaping, some final improvements to be made. We expect the final project to be done late September, early October, at which point there'll be a big celebration that we're working on scheduling. So, and with that, I think that's all I have. I do want to, I forgot to thank the tax collector, Senator Fasano, for his comments this morning.
Yeah, that was nice.
So I want to, you know, thank him for that and the fact that he came over here just to make that. I appreciate that, so.
County Attorney.
I've been made aware that the federal lobbying services contract has expired. And so the, all of our contracts have, or most of our contracts have a built-in renewal clause. It's a simple one, two-page document. If I could get, and it doesn't change any of the terms, except it gives them the ability to work for another year on your payroll.
And the rate stays the same.
Rate stays the same. So if I could have a motion to authorize the chair to sign an extension agreement, when that's drafted, we'll get it done before your August meeting so that they can do stuff.
Is that for all our lobbyists?
It's for the, it's for Vanscoy, the federal lobbyist.
So move.
All in favor? Aye. Pose. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. You know, this happens every few years. Please pass those down.
I thought you were going to say you had nothing to say. It was every few years.
Please pass those down. You can have one. This one's for you, even though you're leaving. And I guess I'm giving out my, I might have given out my original. Yes, it's backyard chicken time. I happened to see this in the, yeah, Charlotte County got their chickens done. We really need to get our chickens done. So I've actually received some emails from people who are saying they really want to save some money, and they don't understand why they can't have their chickens. So I would want to say again, I mean, it's such a small percentage of the population and, but they really want their chickens. And I think we should consider looking at chicken orders. I know we have to run up by Wilton again. I'll work on him. But I just want you to see, other counties are doing it. Commissioner Mariana, you neglected to say you got the presidential award at FAC, which I did too, so thank you for all your service.
Congrats.
And I'm very proud to say I was asked to be chair of the federal committee again for the new, the new incoming executive team, president, I guess. And also I've been asked to do a panel with a commissioner from El Paso, Texas, which some people may know that's where the Air Force Academy is, Colorado Springs and around there, and a commissioner from Oregon on international economic development. So I'll be leading a panel at NACO. Not leading, I'll be one of three on the panel at NACO discussing international economic development. I've been, someone's been sending me photos of people mowing their lawn and all the lawn clippings going into the street. And, you know, I don't know, I don't think you're supposed to do that, but how many of our lawn mower guys, I'm not so sure it matters up in your area, in the coastal area, that just, that just clogs everything up and silt's up everything. I guess it silt's up the ponds. I don't even know if when they're mowing the ponds, if even our own guys collect their, their grass clippings. And then it goes in and it covers the bottom, and then the water doesn't filtrate out, so. But I told her I would bring it up. What, what are, go ahead, Commissioner Mariana.
I think you're, it's something very, very important. Hillsborough actually sends out letters saying you can't do that. I know in Massachusetts, at some points, they have, where they collect the clippings and they make it like you take them away. I'm actually going to be meeting with Merrill Brothers coming up in August about trying to find a way, can we take the clippings? Can they use them and process them in their stuff to try to increase the product that they have to try to go? But just try to create some type of venue to where we can get those out. But, you know, people in Gulf, Gulf Harbors Woodlands, you know, go down the canals there, they got trees everywhere, they got grass that just gets blown in there, and the silt comes from that that fills in. So as part of our waterway cleanup, I think we should be looking at incorporating that everywhere.
You know, I wonder if we could just send a letter, letter out in our, in the utility bill, just a, one of those heads up, this isn't allowed or something, something to think about. I don't know how you enforce it because that's, that's just a hard one to enforce. Panhandlers, we got the new flyers in, thank you very much. And Senator Fasano's office printed them. I'm sorry, I didn't think to bring any here, but for the west side, they're in my office. And we should certainly give some to the guys on the east, but I don't think they have the issues that we have. So you hand those out, and I think it really does, does help them. But I do think I've seen less panhandlers, but apparently I've got a whole group of them living behind International Plaza or whatever, that International Mall in Darlington in 19. Sadly, they're, they're on property that's owned by some guy who lives in Taiwan or somewhere that no one can reach. And Kat, Katie Dotowski, my executive assistant, did a ride around with code enforcement yesterday, and they said they cannot do anything about it because there's, there is not a no trespassing sign, and they cannot reach the gentleman to ask him to sign one, and therefore they're letting them live there. So I, that, that there's nothing legally they can do. So is that true, Mr. County Attorney? Because it's driving the neighborhood crazy.
We gave Commissioner Mariana, I believe, who read it, who read it into the record at a previous meeting, the list of things that you can do that are likely violations if people are living on property without sanitation that is not in addition to no trespassing, to having no trespassing. So all of those things were, are likely.
Well, I think we can send him a notice that he's operating a campground without a permit, which is what we did on the one guy that lived here locally. And when he didn't respond, we went to his house and we served him. But how do we serve someone in Taiwan? The county staff told Katie that they're not allowed to try and contact anyone who doesn't live here, that it was, that the county attorney's office said we could get sued.
But not true.
That's what they're telling, that's what she said she was told. So, so we can, so what can we do when someone lives out in the country? And I mean, we could send them a letter that says, we're going to start leaning them. I think there's already a lien on this property, but what do we do? We just, we foreclose?
Well, yeah, if there's already a lien on the property, then, then you could take, you could, that'll get somebody's attention if we start to foreclose.
I think he's paying his property taxes, just like the liens.
There's likely, there's, if there's other, you've got to be careful when you, when you start to foreclose property, if there are bigger liens than yours on it, then you're going to end up being subject to those liens when, if, if and when you become the property owner.
Okay, Katie's listening to the meeting, and she said code said they cannot mail citations.
That's true. That's a true statement, but that's different than what you said. You can't mail citations and expect that to be adequate service to bring somebody into court.
Can you, Madam Chair, can you, even though it's not a structure, can you still condemn a property with no building on it?
Well, how do we notify someone we're condemning their property?
Could we notice condemnation?
Well, you're, you're way beyond where, you know, this started out with getting a hold of the property owner, and that the county attorney advised that you couldn't mail them a letter without having liability.
Condemnation because of health, 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 life safety.
Let's go back to, to how does code enforcement do their job? You can get service in other states, in other countries.
It's in Thailand. It's in Thailand. So we would hire someone to serve him?
You would hire some, if, if it's important enough for the commission, yes, you would get somebody to, to do foreign service of process.
Okay. I bet code's never done that before.
I'm sure they haven't.
Be good for Micah. Okay, well, listen, I'm willing to take the step, but that's the only step we have to get, that's step one, to get them off the property, because otherwise, is it true we can't do anything if it's private property?
Just said there were, there, we went through a list of things the code could do.
What's the another, sorry? You can get, someone can send it to me.
I can, I can bring, I can bring back an agenda item for next meeting.
Yeah, because I don't remember everything. I thought we could cite them for operating a campground without a permit, which is what I did to get rid of that one that shut down the well.
Right. So, I mean, there are, there are a list of, there are a list of items that you can, that you can go through, some of which need service on the property owner, some of which you can go after the individuals who are occupying the property if there, if there's a sanitation violation. That's the person who's making the sanitation violation. It's not necessarily the property owner. So I'm assuming they're out there without toilets, without, you know, any, any sort of facility. So there are steps that can be taken.
Okay. I was, want to make sure code knows them all.
But code can contact our office, and we'll be happy to assist them.
All right, because right now they said their hands are tied. So in going through the FEMA ordinance, I learned that a fence permit is required when you put a fence in certain areas that are affected by, Sally might, I might mess this up, Sally, affected by, say, storms and flooding and wave action and, Jack, have you ever heard of this?
We dealt with it. We had to have a special attorney deal with it, sent a letter, certified, he got his approval. That guy's since retired. He's the only one we know of that does that.
I, I don't think anyone Gulf Harbors knows they need a fence permit. And as far as I've dealt, when I've dealt with staff, code enforcement anyway, there is no staff, staff fence permit requirement that's, there is no fence permitting process in the county according to them. We've made a rule that no chain-linked fences on 54 and some roads here, we said that, that's the direction. But if we don't require businesses to put, get a permit, how are they going to know they, what kind of fence they can or cannot put up? So Derek's done a little work on this, and he's going to be bringing us some information at the next board meeting when we're back in New Port Ritchie, similar to what you did on the parking. Not, you know, not on residential, but certainly on commercial. And then we're going to have to make sure we're, everyone's aware of this rule in the hazard areas. And lastly, you drive on 52, it's full of cogan grass. And I actually think DOT is becoming a major spread, they're the major spreader on, on 52, but there are some pastures there that are 100% cogan grass on the south side. We need to be very careful when they come in for development, that the way you deal with cogan, from my understanding is when you, when you clear, you've got to put it all into a pile and you've got to burn it. You don't want to take it and transfer it to somewhere else, but I'm telling you, I've been telling this board for a number of years now, we have got to get the cogan grass under control or every empty place, and I'm talking about the spaces between Palmetto's, every one of our right-of-ways is going to be covered in cogan grass because there's nothing that that takes it out. And when you mow it, it sends it out. So I'm asking you, and I talked to Cabala about this, please get it off Starkey Bullheart. Swift Mutt takes it out when it comes on their side, but it is coming down now, the whole side on the right in our right-of-way on Starkey Bullheart. But we, I'm going to talk to Wilton about this. This is a state issue. This is, DOT's also got to get some money to treat their right-of-ways that they're, and they're spreading, they got to stop spreading it. It's, it's just going to be like Malaluka in the Everglades here soon. I think that's it.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Just to go back to the wave action thing, so probably the next meeting or the meeting after, we're going to have, that's going to be a topic. One of the problems with the wave action is it says in it, it's very hard to defend as it's listed. So it is something that we were real careful about letting staff to go put that into the code as we go forward, so please.
You're talking about the limo, the limo line? The limited, the line of, I don't know, I learned about the limo line, and most engineers don't even know anything about it.
Yeah, I think that's.
Where the wave action hits in a coastal area.
Okay, yeah, so, so in trying to prove what's, you know, what's safe and what's not safe and what's permissible and what's not is like super difficult. We don't have the experts on staff for it, and like I said, in the private sector, they're just not out there either.
Yeah.
And like this, this one gentleman, literally, he was going to stop. And like this, this one gentleman, literally, he was gonna stop him from having a retaining wall in his yard after he built this house, after he got a permit for it because of worried about the running. Engineer had to go design it, set it up and it's like, like our whole coast is only, you know, two, three, four feet deep. It actually applies for our whole coast and was completely inapplicable. He finally got it approved and was able to stay. But the next guy coming through, he's gonna face the same struggle without having an engineer that could certify it. We're gonna be causing more and more trouble up and down the coast.
So Commissioner, the Commissioner Chuax from Charlotte County, who used to be president of the Florida Building Association, um, he's very concerned about all this action that FEMA's taken and, um, just like when we went up there for the bigger waters, they don't necessarily have any numbers to back up a lot of the things that they're saying. I talked to some builders and developers in Pinellas County. They went unbeknownst to them, they didn't do what we're doing and what, where we have stakeholder groups, they went to a level three. And they told me, this is in the community rating system, we're level six, they went to a level three, it's wreaking economic havoc. And, I mean, they've only just done it and it's already costing millions and millions and millions of dollars, millions of dollars. Projects falling through right and left and, and they, they said they're trying to change it and, um, it's, it's really gonna become a big problem for Pinellas County, so.
And again, that's why I wanted to make sure we're gonna get, sent to us the federal, the state, and then redline out the changes to what they're trying to put in, so we find out what needs to be done and what's desirous of the staff to get done.
Yeah, this is something that our federal lobbyists can work on us with. But I, I am sure that when we go to Tallahassee, Washington, um, this will be on our, on our subject list, FEMA, when we go, go to Washington. Okay.
Me?
All right. Oh, you.
Yes.
I didn't, did I skip you?
You did, but I thought you were saving the best for last. So, um, I have actually just a, a quick update. I have handed out our big, um, annual comprehensive financial report. It was filed with the Government Financial, Financial Officers Association back in May. This is from the annual audit, financial audit that we go through. It's a comprehensive financial audit. It includes the constitutionals as well as the county and, um, culminates into this beautiful document for your reading. And, um, what we do is we take the information here and make it consumable for, um, everyone and we create a popular annual financial report. That's not ready yet, but once I have it, I will distribute that and I'll, I'll be free to, happy to give you some copies if you wanna hand out when you're out and about and talking with people. We did submit this for the, um, Award of Excellence in Financial Reporting with GFOA. Um, we're just, we're waiting on that, um, award and if we get it, it'll be twenty-nine consecutive years of receiving the Excellence Award in Financial Reporting. So excited that we can hopefully make it twenty-nine, run it twenty, or, sorry, twenty-nine. Phew, that is such a wrong number, so off by ten, thirty-nine years, thirty-nine years. And, you know, I think that there's probably maybe some people in this room that aren't thirty-nine years old, so.
Not me.
Not me.
So, so I was at a debate and there was a candidate who said, I'm gonna request a forensic audit the minute, you know, I get elected. And then I was able to tell this person, we do it every year and it's online, so how about it? I wish other constitutionals would do them, but we, we have ours done.
You should've let him, you should've told him to come to the meeting and say that in the diet so we could've corrected him.
I could've given him a copy.
That's only happened a few times.
So, yeah. I, I neglected to say we get an award for it too, so. What'd you get?
Thirty-nine years. It's for Pasco County.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Dan, last meeting was a long one. I've got another meeting, so I get to go home.